My pleasure, my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steen.
President.
Councilmember Larg Anderson. Councilmember King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
Bouton.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
We need a motion for adoption of the agenda. We have two items. The council should have those items. I believe that 28, 29, with those additions, we need a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number two is a motion for approval of the minutes from October 6, 2014, October 4, 2014, and September 20, 2014. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three, are there any citizens present tonight that wish to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Roger, why don't you step up?
I'm going to address the council, not as a council member, but a member of the community of Austin. I think you've all read about the tragedy that happened Saturday morning in Austin. And that's, of course, the death of Dr. Richard Schindler, who died Saturday morning around 10:30. It really was a heartfelt loss for the entire community and for everyone as he was so well-respected and loved by so many for his contribution to the city of Austin and also as a skilled and professional physician in the city of Austin, the city of Adams, Minnesota. He was instrumental, I think we all know, in supporting free cross-country skiing at the nature center for several years. And he was also chair of the YMCA board, and a significant chair, in a time when the Y is changing and was thinking about moving to a new facility. He is also instrumental in starting a biking club at the high school. And, of course, he was heavily involved, both he and his wife, in the Austin artist works, both in the celebration in August and in the artworks center that's located on Main Street. He died biking Saturday morning while loving what he did best, and that was working on a trail for the high school students in Austin. So let us remember Dick Schindler as a very special friend, a promoter, and a citizen, a great citizen of Austin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. I think everybody, it's a loss for the whole community. Anybody else that wishes? Sir, why don't you come up, give us, come on up here, get up to the podium and give us your, you guys look familiar. Didn't I just see you in a meeting yesterday?
Yes, you did, sir.
Why don't you give us your name, where you live, and what you want to address the council for?
My name is John Rujok. I've lived here in Austin for the last three years, but the last two years, actually, I was working in South Sudan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank the members of the council for giving us this opportunity to address the council. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the mayor, and part of the meeting is some of the problems that we feel we face as South Sudanese community here in the city of Austin. We feel we are already part of the community, and when one part of the community hurts, the entire body is affected. Our main issue, the biggest issue that we are facing, is the issue of education. We feel that our children are not doing very well. And part of the problem, according to what views we got from the community, is that we have cultural and communication barriers. You know, sometimes we feel that we are not rich, maybe it's part of it is the community is not reaching out enough to the council or to the city, so that we try to solve some of the problems that our children face. Particularly, we have issues with academic performance. The performance of our children is really behind. And we also have issues with discipline. Now, like I said earlier, part of the problem is due to lack of proper communication. I must also bring it to the attention of the council here that the majority of the parents that we have here, most of them came here to this country as refugees. And because of the political situation in our country, in the Sudan, most of them didn't get the opportunity to go to school. As such, they are not able to read and write. And when the children go home, even with some information from school, it's the same children who are supposed to read to the same parents. And sometimes, there is a tendency to hide some of the information. And that's why sometimes even the school administration does not see the participation that is expected of our community. So what we feel we need to do as a city is to try to help us find a way to solve this problem. You know, we want to find a space where we can actually participate, those of us who are lucky enough to have gotten some education back home, to be part of the solution. How do we help these parents who are not able to read, who are not able to participate in their children's activity, I mean, in their children's education, back in the country where we grew up in? The only thing a parent would do is get by school uniform, give them a book, and then they'll point you to the school. You go. You come back, nobody looks at your work. And that's the system that we have. And it seems that there is a spillover of that system here. Parents tend to believe that once a child is sent to school, the school is supposed to take care of everything. But this is not the case here. So part of the issue is how do we help these parents? How do we help this community to help the children who are really falling behind? You know, we have other issues that the community also raised, the issue of culture. We want to be part of Austin, but how do we become part of Austin if we are not part of what is happening? You know, we have very rich traditional dances, for example, but where do we practice in order for us to present those traditional dances? You know, these are some of the issues that are going on in the community. I've not exhausted all of them, since I'm the only person here, as Chief Brown is over there. We have a lot of other issues, but we feel that this is the right place for us to come and try to talk about these issues and see how best we can help the community help itself. So I thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Well, you know, I went to a meeting yesterday, and I think Jean Poppy was there, and Dave McKeegan from the police department. And, you know, a lot of times you hear people in Austin say, when people come over, is they're here now, they have to do it as Americans, like we do it. Well, the Sudanese community is struggling to do that. They want to do it our way. They want to be Americans, and they want to get involved. It's really delightful, the community, a community to interact with, and we'll certainly see what we can do. I mean, I don't think there's any possibility of failure with the people you have. And this is just a sampling of them. We had maybe 20 of them, 25, 30, yesterday at the library. And it's just, it's just a delight to meet with them, because they're very positive and forward-looking people. Okay, also, Sandra, are you here? Well, we'll get to you. Sandra Ewing, and coordinator for Mauer County Zero Towards Death Campaign, presenting seat belts and child restraints. I think you also work with my wife, and she's
I do, yes.
She's very fond of you. She likes you.
Well, that's quite the endorsement.
She likes your accent.
Ah.
[laughing]
Thank you, first of all, for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Towards Zero Death Campaign. I'll keep things as brief as I can. It covers a multitude of areas, but today, the focus will be on the current wave, which is seat belts and child restraints. The Towards Zero Deaths Campaign is a multidisciplinary program which was formed to address the rising trend in fatalities and serious injuries in Minnesota. Its vision is to reduce fatalities and serious injuries on Minnesota roads to zero, which is quite the task. The good news is that between 2009 and 2013, fatalities were down by 8 percent, and serious injuries were down by 4 percent. Specific to this current wave, unbelted fatalities were down by 12 percent. So what's been happening is working, but we can always do more. In southeast Minnesota, the reduction in fatalities and serious injuries is 25 percent. So we're doing better, on average, than the rest of the state. The Mauer County regional average, the Mauer County figures are about on par with the regional average, and Mauer County figures in relation to serious injuries, the first figure was in relation to fatalities, the Mauer County figure in relation to serious injuries is less than the national and the regional average. So we're doing well, but we could do better. Last year, there were three fatalities in Mauer County. The devastating ripple effects of that are obviously enormous. It may seem like a low number, but certainly not to those families that were affected, and that's the families of everybody involved in those crashes. They're deliberately called crashes as opposed to accidents, as the authorities believe that there's always a reason, and that most of these are preventable. So specific to the Click It or Ticket campaign, during the month of October, nearly 400 Minnesota law enforcement agencies will be focusing on seat belt and child restraint violations. And motorists not wearing seat belts will be targeted in a statewide campaign to ensure that all drivers and passengers are correctly restrained inside the vehicle, and tickets will be issued to those who are breaking the law. However, this campaign is about much more than just enforcing the law. It's about getting Minnesota motorists to realize that their best defense against being killed or seriously injured in a car crash is by buckling up, not as is the, as what people often think is an airbag. It really isn't. It's the seat belt. The statistics speak for themselves. 357 people died last year on Minnesota's roads. 260 were male, and 127 were female. Forty-three percent of those were 29 years old or younger. And only a third of the children who died were properly restrained, which is, to me, quite a staggering figure. We're getting it particularly wrong in relation to five- and nine-year-olds. And I think that's because that's the time where they seem to be transitioning from the proper child restraint seats to the booster seats, and we're often getting it wrong in relation to that particular age group. So parents are encouraged, and grandparents who are often doing much of the running around these days, are encouraged to take particular care with that age group. Less than one in 100 are killed or seriously injured if they are wearing a seat belt, and more than one in 10 are killed or seriously injured if they are not wearing a seat belt. Again, staggering figures. Specific to Mauer County, 80 percent of these deaths occurred on rural roads, just like those here, when the driver was not wearing a seat belt. The message is clear, that rural roads are dangerous, and motorists need to realize this fact. They're dangerous for lots of different reasons. Young male drivers are the least likely to buckle up and are more likely to die in car crashes than any other group. In fact, 16- to 19-year-olds are more likely to die in a car crash than they are as a result of the other two leading causes of death in that age group, homicide and suicide, put together. Parents are encouraged to discuss the seatbelt laws with their teens, and that they are there for their protection, particularly during the first year of holding a license, which has proven to be the most dangerous period in their entire driving career. All drivers are encouraged to ensure that everyone in their vehicle is properly buckled up before they begin their journey, and to refuse to leave before they are. Teens need to have the maturity to speak up, and I think that's the message that seems to be coming through from law enforcement, not to stay silent and to tell their friends to buckle up, as everybody who's not belted is risking the life of another occupant of the car as well as their own. The harsh reality is that fatal car crashes are a grim scene. I've seen many in my former job, and the violence that occurs when an unbelted motorist is involved in a car crash is horrifying. Unbelted passengers smash into the other occupants or are tossed around the car. Unbelted drivers are often ejected from the vehicle and killed when the vehicle rolls over them. These are real facts. This is what happens. Even in less serious crashes, unbelted drivers slam into the steering wheel, suffer broken noses, and lose teeth. Similarly, a vehicle is the most dangerous place a child can be. That is a sobering thought when our hectic lifestyles today are considered. Parents are encouraged to take proper time to ensure that their children are securely fastened into the appropriate restraint for their age and height, no matter how long it takes. When a driver is buckled up, there is a 95 percent chance that their child will be. When they are not, their children are only restrained 25 percent of the time. In the last four years, 86 percent of the children who were properly restrained suffered no injuries whatsoever. And 12 percent of the remainder suffered only minor injuries. Again, very important figures. Enforcing seatbelt and child restraint laws saves lives, and the evidence is irrefutable. The laws, guidelines in relation to child passengers are that all children under 13 years old should sit in the rear of the vehicle and wear a seatbelt. That's not a law. That's a very strong guideline that they issue from the Office of Traffic Safety. Newborns up to about age two should be in rear-facing infant seats. Age two to around four, depending on their height, should be in forward-facing toddler seats. And age four to at least age eight or four feet nine inches tall should be in booster seats. Parents should visit www.buckleupkids.mn.gov for specific advice. Vehicles today are manufactured with reinforced cages that can withstand enormous pressure and will protect those within the occupants' zone, but they are quite obviously useless if you are ejected from the vehicle as you're not wearing a seatbelt. The seatbelt holds you firmly in this zone and has saved thousands upon thousands of lives. The good news is that 95 percent of drivers and front-seat passengers in Minnesota wear seatbelts. Education, enforcement, and strengthening seatbelt laws have influenced this trend, influenced this trend. Drivers are encouraged to take on board the statistics, learn from them, influence each other's behavior, and take a few minutes at the beginning of each journey to keep themselves and their children safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, do you have anything to add? I think she did a pretty good job.
It's a great program. Captain David McKeegan is in charge of pretty much Austin and Mauer Counties' waves, whether it be seat belt speed, distracted driving, and it's, like she stated, it's a program that is educating the public, and it's making a huge difference for safety for all citizens on the roadways. So I applaud her for bringing that information to the public.
Thank you. Matt, did you have something to add to that?
I don't want to be as long as some of them. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I would just comment that before high school age, I was actively supporting a healthy environment. And can I have this put on the screen? Anyway, this is Austin State Park at North Main Street. And some of you that were here decades ago remember that. This is by the pool, west of the pool. And can I have that on the screen now?
It's on there.
Okay. Now, this is Main Street now. It used to be, this used to be a state park. And anyway, this is Main Street now, today. Otherwise, I guess I'm done with this. But anyway, Austin is probably the only example in the whole country that turns a state park into a commercial park of damaged environment, wrecked environment, wrecked and damaged watershed. And this was done at public expense, like $15 million to benefit private business, and this Hormel company in particular. Yet, the city government knows and votes for soaking millions from Austin's 99 percent common citizens. And anyway, the vast public money to build, the citizens, common citizens don't get vast public money to build roads and streets and sewers, but rather, the city government soaks millions of dollars from the common citizens. And anyway, forces many of the citizens into debts to private banks. And this is called fascism. Anyway, I object. And private corporations like Hormel's abuse power and destroy democracy. And I just wish to comment on that.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? If not, we'll move on, and we come to awards and recognitions. We have a proclamation. I think Amy Baskin is here to present. I will read the proclamation, Amy, and then you can come on and comment and tell us why this is so important. Proclamation: From October 20, 2014, through October 25, 2014, Early Childhood Family Education will celebrate its 40th anniversary in Minnesota. And whereas ECFE offers classes, home visits, and other educational services for all Minnesota families with children from prenatal to third grade, focusing on infants and toddlers. And whereas ECFE recognizes that parents are a child's first and most important teachers. And whereas ECFE works to strengthen and support families by governing parent and early childhood education, so parents can provide the best possible environment for their child's learning and development. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Steen, Mayor of the City of Austin, Minnesota, recognize the importance of early childhood learning and do hereby proclaim the week of October 20, 2014, as Early Childhood Family Education Week. Amy, and you can have this proclamation when you're done up there. Or you can have it now if you like. Doesn't really matter.
Mayor Steen and members of the council, thank you very much for the proclamation. Early Childhood Family Education has been very active in the community of Austin since 1986, and we are celebrating the 40th birthday of this organization in the state of Minnesota this week statewide. So I appreciate that recognition. And we are having a party. So at your places tonight was an invitation to the party on Saturday. We would encourage you to come and enjoy all the activities that we have. As you mentioned, Early Childhood Family Education is an organization that partners with other organizations. It's run through the public schools in the state of Minnesota, and it is an organization that partners with others to provide opportunities for our very earliest learners. So appreciate your support and encourage you to come and celebrate with us. The entire community is welcome on Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00 at the Community Learning Center. We will have magic and activities and, of course, birthday games and birthday food. So, thank you very much.
Well, and thank you, Amy, for all the hard work you do on that. We appreciate that. And I know you work real hard for that stuff. You make a difference. Okay, we now will move on to the consent agenda. We need a motion.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number six, under public hearings, six of the public hearing on assessments for 2014, junk garbage and hidden debris removal for two parcels. Continued from October 6, 2014, council meeting.
Your Honor, and council members.
I haven't seen that. I'm not used to that yet.
There were several garbage, junk, and debris removal assessments. There were objections to two of those assessments. One was the Parnay property. There was a representative of the family here at that time who gave the impression that there may have been a court order that impacted our ability to make an assessment against their property. I did get a copy of the last order that was issued regarding the Parnays. The order addressed a criminal matter, not any civil matters. There was nothing that would impact the council's ability to make an assessment on that property. Kathy Scabiro G. Parnay did come in today and spoke to me and some other city employees. I think she had some requests that she may want to make to the council. My understanding was that there was not an objection to the assessment at this time.
Okay, why don't you come on up here and address us?
I came on behalf of my son, and he's willing to work with you to get this paid off, but he cannot afford to pay 30, whatever it is, $3,100. So he's asking the council to spread it over a 10-year, 10 years, so that he can pay it off.
$3,100 over 10 years?
With interest.
With interest.
Your Honor?
We also spoke with Craig Byram. Have you spoke with Craig Byram in your office today?
Right, why not?
We spoke with Craig Byram about this. David, you'd been gone at the time. So we spoke with Craig Byram, and he said, if council does desire to do such, they certainly could. It's within their realm of not having to republizize and everything like that, since this is the worst-case scenario. So her request, I think, is to spread this out over 10 years, which is different than the resolution you have in front of you, which is just one year. But again, from our standpoint, we need the attorney's office to draft an appropriate agreement, if that's what council wants.
Well... What are our options, Mr. Holvorskin? I mean, we have the 10-year option. We have, I mean, what are our options on this?
Oh, let me advise the council and the mayor that the city ordinance does provide that the assessment can be spread over 10 years at the city's discretion. So I don't think we need any special agreement. Rather, we just amend the resolution to provide that the assessment should be spread over 10 years.
Okay, council?
That, Holly, does that?
I did speak to Mr. Dankert and Ms. Casle, Hazel. And my understanding is that there were notices, public notices, that had to go out with regards to the resolution, and that the reason for an agreement might be to waive those notices that are required by law with regards to the time of, the length of time for the payment, and then also the interest rate that would be allocated to that payment over the year time period. Does that sound correct, Mr. Dankert?
Yes, in essence, our concern was having to go through the publication process again with the legal notices required with the assessment. If it's not done at this point in time to get it on the 2015 taxes, we would have to wait to redo this, and it wouldn't hit till the 2016 taxes. That's why we indicated we can't just go through the reassessment process, because we don't have enough physical time left to meet the county's requirements as to when it's being, would be put on the tax statement. So that's when we talked to Mr. Byram about the options, if council so desires. You don't have to, because, again, you followed all the laws and requirements for the publication. But if you so desire, you do have the option to do that as a resolution instead of what's on the agenda tonight.
So we have the option of spreading it out over 10 years?
You could.
$3,200 is not going to break the city one way or the other.
I guess this sounds like a reasonable accommodation to me, so I'd like to move a resolution for parcel 34.916.0220 for garbage, junk, and debris removal in the amount of $3,194.56 at 4 and 3/4 percent interest over a 10-year period, subject to an agreement signed by the property owner.
Is there a second? Any more speaking? This is the resolution, Mr. Dankert?
So this is a resolution just for that parcel?
Just for that property.
So a motion by council member Austin, second by council member King, adopting that resolution for one parcel for a 10-year repayment period. And I vote as in favor of such. Council member King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bouton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
And now we deal with the other parcel on this resolution? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Your Honor. At the last city council meeting, an individual named Cindy Lacan objected to the assessment. She has been in contact with me as well. She said she had an agreement. She doesn't actually own the property, but she's been residing there since December of 2013. She has an agreement with the owner to request from Fairway Outdoor Advertising. She has an agreement with the owner to pay the back taxes owed prior to purchasing the They want to put a dynamic sign, which is similar to the sign in, near the Quick Trip property. So she was, of course, concerned about additional assessments being put on the taxes. We discussed the time of the garbage removal and whose responsibility that should be, which on the...
First Avenue Southwest.
That's where Quick Trip is.
we agreed should be the current owner. I think I've got the address on the corner of First Avenue Southwest and 12th Street She said at this point she would not object and would work out that issue with the owner. Southwest, which I believe you're more than likely familiar with. The current sign post meets, meets the setback standards, but the sign face does not.
Okay.
So she is not, Cindy Lacan, she's not the owner. She's just residing on the property. And she, she made the objection at the last hearing, but she is going to resolve that. The ordinance height, or ordinance limits the height to 22 feet.
She's withdrawing the objection?
The existing sign is 30. She's withdrawing the objection, yes. The planning commission reviewed those, reviewed those issues and did make a recommendation
She has no standing to make that.
Right. That's what I was just going to ask. Okay.
Correct.
So how do we proceed then, Mr.?
to the council to approve the sign appeal.
We add to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
We move the resolution to adopt the assessments.
Is there a second? Council?
Second.
If there is nothing further, we need a motion. Mr. Dankert?
Council member King?
So moved.
Aye.
Second.
Austin?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We need another motion adjurning the sign board of appeals and resolving back into the city council.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight is a motion authorizing a contract for the purchase of a fire truck budgeted for 2015 prior to October 31st, 2014, to utilize cost savings. Chief, why don't you explain to us why this is such a good idea?
Your honor, November 1st, there's going to be an increase in the price of this vehicle. And we're asking that you guys approve the purchase in this year, this year, to avoid that price increase, and the fire department of the city of Austin can save the additional funds.
Substantial savings to us, right?
Substantial.
Okay. I think we discussed this at the work session. Any more questions from the council? If there are none, we need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number nine is a motion granting a sidewalk removal request for 14020406, 19th Avenue Southwest, subject to the residents responsible for all costs associated with the removal, and the removal being completed by a licensed contractor. Once again, we did talk about this at the work session, I think. Stephen, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, there is one thing I would like to add. Another condition on that, in that, you know, as, as walking patterns change, as philosophies change, there may be a time that a sidewalk gets put back in here, you know, not knowing 10, 20 years from now, kind of what the pedestrian patterns will be in this area. There, there may be a sidewalk that is needed. So I wanted to put that caveat out there, that maybe another condition be placed here that the residents acknowledge that in the future, if a sidewalk is installed, they would not object to a comprehensive sidewalk being completed in this area.
Okay. With that, sounds reasonable. Is that a motion right here? Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number 10 is a motion authorizing funding for a bike repair station and bike racks from the 2014 budgeted Vision 2020 funds. Stephen, I, once again, we talked about this.
Yep, just to expand on that a little bit, the Vision 2020 Bike Walk Committee is proposing to install a bike repair station at the Old Eagles Club site, which has been turned into a staging area for bicycles. The Lions have put up a shelter there, and we would look to provide a, a small repair station at that location.
Council, anything? If there isn't, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 11 is a motion authorizing the hiring process for the zoning building inspector position. Mr. Lang? We, well, once again, we discussed this. Any questions from council? It's been going on for quite a while. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 12 is a motion authorizing the hiring process for a water quality specialist. Same, basically. Any questions? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? 13 is a resolution authorizing the transfer of $3,500, or $350,000 from the Community Development Fund, $24,000 into Building Fund, $48,000, Budget Amendment Number Five. Mr. Dankert?
As was discussed at the last work session, the Fund $24,000 Community Development was created many years ago before the local option sales tax was, with a deposit from the city's general fund of $1 million to help with matching flood grants. Now that the local option sales tax is in place, there's dollars available in there that we would like council to reappropriate into the building fund, so that they could be used towards the Oak Park Mall renovation needs and the potential for the Nature Center project and any other capital projects that may seem fit. Our auditors don't like us really having funds with no use in them, so we like to make sure this cash is being used for a specific purpose.
Council? If there's nothing further, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Council member King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bouton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, your honor.
Thank you. 14 is a resolution authorizing increasing a clerk's position to the top of the step scale, thereby eliminating any intermediary anniversary steps for the position. Mr. Dankert, can you elaborate on this?
As was discussed at the end of the last work session, council members have brought up a request that I had to increase the steps for the city clerk's position. At this point in time, she was not in a step system and based on her work directly with us and council as an exempt employee. And we requested council eliminate those steps and just put her at the pay plan top.
Questions?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute. This is a resolution.
Resolution. Council member King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bouton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, your honor.
Thank you. 15 is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. We do this every, every two weeks. We need a resolution.
So move the, second.
Mr. Dankert?
Council member King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bouton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Council member Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 16 is a resolution accepting Hormel Foundation donation for the purchase of Oak Park Mall. Mr. Dankert, why don't you, obviously, this is a pretty big deal for the city, and I know a lot of people aren't entirely clear on it, so maybe you could clarify this issue for us.
Finally, the finance department has received a donation. The Oak Park Mall purchase was facilitated by a donation from the Hormel Foundation to the tune of three, almost three-point, well, the actual check was $3,236,935. They've appropriated up to $3.5 million for us towards the acquisition costs related to that parcel. The Austin Port Authority actually approved this donation also, because the funds will be flowing right through them. But one of the other letters or correspondence I had from the Hormel Foundation was a request city council approval, too. City council is a joint funder in the project, as we get to the finance committee will talk through, to help with some of the redevelopment costs. But again, this is, I'd like council's authorization to accept the donation of up to $3.5 million towards the Oak Park Mall acquisition.
Thank you. Council, any questions, auditions, comments? Other than that, we're very happy with this, I'm sure.
This would not have happened without that donation. We couldn't have made the numbers work.
It wouldn't happen without you either. With that, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Council member King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bouton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, your honor.
Thank you. 19 is a motion approving preliminary plat agreement, or plat for Cedar River Number Two. Holly?
At the last planning commission meeting, a request for approval of a preliminary plat, which had already been reviewed by Moore County and partially developed prior to annexation by the city of Austin. The plat was not recorded and was subject to review under the city ordinances. This approval is necessary prior to submission of a final plat, which will then include the final easements and whatever else is necessary in the recorded document. The planning commission reviewed the preliminary plat and voted unanimously for approval of the plat.
Anything from the council? If not, we need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 20 is a motion calling a public hearing on November 3rd, 2014, for the final plat approval for Cedar River, or Cedar Ridge Number Two. We need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 21 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Austin Part-Time Firefighter Relief Association for accounting services. Every time I hear accounting, we have to talk to Tom for explanation.
As council may recall, back in March of 2013, due to a pending retirement of their secretary, they approached us, helped them, to help them with their financial side of operations and dealing with the state auditors and the local auditors. They're going to try to do that on their own for a while, but they've come to the conclusion that they would like us to help them out, as originally requested, with a goal of transitioning this into their current, current workforce to help with that process. So we had Mr. Horvuskin's office draft just a simple agreement that the Relief Association has signed, and we'd recommend a request approval of that also by the city council.
Anything from the council? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Council member King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bouton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Abstain.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0 with one abstaining, your honor.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution approving a transfer of on-sale liquor and Sunday on-sale liquor. And I think it says 3-2 off-sale. We're supposed to add that council doesn't have that on theirs. From New, the New Schmitty's Tavern to Hoot and Ollie's LLC DBA, the New Schmitty's Tavern, subject to the transfer of business assets and insurance requirements. Anybody want to end? Did you want to? I'm pretty self-explanatory, right?
Yeah, we're just transferring this liquor license. The actual transfer of the business won't happen for a few days, but we're just getting it transferred through, and then we'll issue the license once the transfer has taken place of the business asset, so they can open up and operate right away.
And we're going to make sure we check out the owners real well, aren't we, chief? Make sure there's no skeletons there. Need a resolution.
So move the resolution. Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Council member King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bouton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, your honor, with council member Enright abstaining.
Thank you. Item number three is a resolution adopting a resolution declaring the property located at 1508 8th Street Southeast a hazardous structure. Holly?
Yes, this property is owned outright by the individuals named in the memorandum, Jennifer Sucha and Jeremy Welke. There's no mortgage on the property. However, the owners have abandoned the property and have not been able to be located. That property has been frequently trespassed on. The people who are living or squatting in the building have left a lot of debris and a lot of garbage around the property. They may or may not have been renters at one time. However, the utilities to that property have been turned off.
For how long?
I am not sure how long the utilities have been turned off. The, um, the property owners have not responded to any of the notices that were sent to them under Minnesota Statute 463.251. The governing body may order the building secured if the building becomes vacant or unoccupied and is deemed hazardous due to the fact that the building is open to trespass and has not been secured, and the building could be made safe by securing the building, and that is my, my recommendation. I understand that law enforcement has been at the property a few times, but the individuals were not arrested for trespass due to some, some ambiguity about their, their right to be on the property potentially. The idea is that the property would be boarded. There's not actually a structural problem, so there wouldn't be, the, there wouldn't be any repairs made to the property, but it would be secured so that these people can't continue to enter the property and potentially cause damage or cause further, I guess, nuisance around the area. The, um, the order would be sent by notice to the last known address of the property owners, and service would be complete upon mailing, and then they would have six days to make an objection to the city council.
So right now, we're just securing the property?
Correct.
What are the next steps? I mean, obviously, I went by there today, and, you know, apparently, it's a viable property. I mean, we're not tearing it down or anything, correct?
No, that is not the, that is not the plan. It was just simply to keep, keep some squatters out of the property and keep them from continuing to damage or cause nuisance in the area.
So what, what happens to this property long-term?
Well, that would be, that would be the next step, I guess. The, the city could potentially rehabilitate or do, and, or do a tax for, or tax forfeiture is possible as well. It's my understanding that the taxes are not being paid on that property.
Okay. Council, anything? Then we need a, where are we?
Resolution.
Resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Council member King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bouton?
Aye.
Abstaining.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor, with Councilmember Enright abstaining.
Thank you. Item number three is a resolution adopting a resolution declaring the property located at fifteen oh-eight Eighth Street Southeast a hazardous structure. Holly?
Yes, this property is owned outright by the individuals named in the memorandum, Jennifer Susha and Jeremy Welke. There's no mortgage on the property. However, the owners have abandoned the property and have not been able to be located. That property has been frequently trespassed on. The people who are living or squatting in the building have left a lot of debris and a lot of garbage around the property. They may or may not have been renters at one time, however, the utilities to that property have been turned off.
For how long?
I am not sure how long the utilities have been turned off. The, the property owners have not responded to any of the notices that were sent to them. Under Minnesota statute four sixty-three point two-five-one, the governing body may order the building secured if the building becomes vacant or unoccupied and is deemed hazardous due to the fact that the building is open to trespass and has not been secured, and the building could be ma- made safe by securing the building, and that is my, my recommendation. I understand that law enforcement has been at the property a few times, but the individuals were not arrested for trespass due to some, some ambiguity about their, their right to be on the property potentially. The idea is that the property would be boarded. There's not actually a structural problem, so there wouldn't be, the, there wouldn't be any repairs made to the property, but it would be secured so that these people can't continue to enter the property and potentially cause damage or cause further, I guess, nuisance around the area. The, the order would be sent by notice to the last known address of the property owners, and service would be complete upon mailing, and then they would have six days to make an objection to the city council.
So right now, we're just securing the property?
Correct.
What are the next steps? I mean, obviously, I went by there today and, you know, apparently, it's a viable property. I mean, we're not tearing it down or anything, correct?
No, that is not the, that is not the plan. It was just simply to keep, keep some squatters out of the property and keep them from continuing to damage or cause nuisance in the area.
So what, what, what happens to this property long-term?
Well, that would be, that would be the next step, I guess. The, the city could potentially rehabilitate or do, and, or do a tax for, or tax forfeiture is possible as well. It's my understanding that the taxes are not being paid on that property.
Okay. Counsel, anything? Then we need a, where are we?
Resolution.
Resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twenty-four is a resolution approving a change order with West Central Environmental Consultants. Stephen?
Yes, when we entered into the purchase agreement of the old budget gas station, there was funds set aside to go through this process of determining if there was any soil contamination there prior to us purchasing the site. So we've been working with the previous property owner and the MPCA to do groundwater monitoring on the old budget gas station site, and this, as we, as we do the monitoring that the MPCA requests us, we are working with West Central Environmental Consultants to do that work, and the reports would then be submitted to the MPCA, and the MPCA then comes back and asks for some modifications to the testing, maybe doing it in different areas just to verify that there aren't any groundwater or downstream impacts. And we are now up to our fourth phase of testing, and the most recent estimate that I have received from the consultant, based on what the MPCA is, is requiring of us for, for testing, is at a cost of eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. This would bring grand total to fifty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents for the total project, and of that, ninety percent is funded through the Petro Fund, and the remaining ten percent will be funded through an escrow that has been set aside when we purchase the property to pay for these funds. So at this point, there will, in the long term, would be no cost to the city, just staff time and coordinating this. We'd recommend approval of this phase four of the groundwater monitoring.
Okay, counsel, if there's no objections, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twenty-five is a resolution setting a public hearing for December first, two thousand fourteen, for the proposed establishment of a tax increment financing district number thirteen and adoption of a tax increment financing plan, therefore... Mr. Dankert, this is kind of interesting.
This is, right, just setting a public hearing for December first for a proposed tax increment financing district. This is a first step for us to start the Oak Park Mall development. We'd like to create a tax increment district such that the increased taxes that they will be paying, which is called the increment, we would be able to recapture and utilize to repay ourselves back, the Port Authority back, the county back, anybody else that may participate in this program with us. This would give us a pool of money to potentially do that. I'm not certain it's going to cover all of it, based on the increment and the cost, but it's a good start.
Counsel, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twenty-six is a series of motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department a power to contract for the, for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A six-oh-two, Sixth Avenue Northwest, Sleeton and Graff property. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. B three-eleven, Fourth Street Southeast, Sheriff's Youth Program property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. C fourteen oh-two, Fourth Avenue Southwest, the date property. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. And finally, D eleven oh-two, Sixteenth Avenue Northeast, the Marsolic property. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.